I will now call it June eight, June 18th, 2016, Blue Springs City Council Meeting. 2018, boy, I'm not looking good here. Let me pull it up close so I can see it. 2018 Blue Springs City Council Meeting in order. If you would stand for me, observe a moment of silence and I will lead you into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, I'm a couple of years younger now, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome you and the tenants as well as those who might be watching on cable TV to tonight's City Council Meeting. Next we have the consent agenda. Councilman Carter asked that we pull item F. And I accept a motion to approve all items except item F.
Sir, move.
Sir, second.
Second.
Let's roll call this one.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Levinson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Councilman Carter for discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. What I pulled from the consent agenda was the committee for the charter review. The charter review is a very important process. The charter is our constitution. It's the rulebook for how we govern Blue Springs. And I believe it should always have checks and balances. In the 2014 process, I warned that we were blurring the line between the executive and the legislative. And this line has been totally erased in places as a result of what happened in 2014. The council is at fault for a lot of this because it's been easier to go along to get along. But I think, and I give this advice to myself as well, it's time for all of us to take our role of advice and consent seriously and not just rubber stamp appointments. It is time for all of us to read the charter and follow it. I carry it and look for me in the future to ask questions when things don't sound right, show me where that is in the charter. Article three, section one of the charter, where power is vested, except as the charter provides otherwise, all powers of the city shall be vested in the city council. This is after all the city council meeting, and I hope the council needs to be more assertive. The charter review is a city council function. The mayor isn't even mentioned in the paragraph other than as a 2014 review item. He is a member of the city council. Yet, in the list that you have on the consent agenda, he is naming one-third of the members. That's article 12, section eight, if anyone wants to read that paragraph. The order of business in a city council meeting is to be determined by the council. Recent practice and tradition has been that the mayor sets the agenda. That is nowhere in the charter. We should not be afraid as a council to ask for things to be added to the agenda for debate and votes. I'm not asking for things to be changed from the way they are now, but I don't think council members should be afraid to ask to add items to the agenda for debate and votes. Even the president has to seek advice and consent before major appointments. The 2014 review gave us two positions where the council is irrelevant. I'd like to know the answer to that question, and I'll be asking it in the Charter Review Commission process. The last time, I think the Charter Review Commission failed us by producing fixes for things that were working just fine. We failed the citizens as a council by passing on what were long confusing ballot initiatives that they trusted us to vote for. This is our opportunity to fix it. Brian Pratt chaired the 2014 charter review that gave us the elimination of some of our checks and balances. I had asked the mayor to not appoint him because asking him to be removed would slow down this process. I will not ask for a motion to do that. However, I will ask for a motion for Jeannie Lauer, who is currently listed as the co-chair, to be named chair. Her city council experience with this body combined with her recent experience on the House Committee on the Former Governor, I think make her uniquely qualified to run this process. So at this time, I would make that motion.
I, that motion is out of order. Because you asked for a discussion, the city council will discuss the comments you made. Now, I'm going to start out with those comments. There are two people that I, and we exchanged emails yesterday.
Right.
There are two people that's very capable of making the timelines that we're confronted with. This is not a one-year process to be able to fulfill the obligation and timeframe of the charter. We want to get this done in six months so it can be on the April ballot.
I agree.
We need someone leading it that can do it. Brian Pratt had led it last year. He's very capable. He's a former member of the House of Representatives. He chaired that last year, and he was Speaker pro temp, excelled in the number-two position in the House of Representatives. So there's nothing negative about Brian Pratt's ability to do the job. And in our exchange yesterday, I indicated that maybe rather than say Brian Chair and Jeannie Vice Chair, it probably should have been co-chairs. Because I've talked to both of them and they're willing to work together. Number two is also said in that email to you that we didn't have to choose a Chair, Vice Chair, or Co-Chair. Maybe the sanest thing to do and the fairest thing to do is once the commission is seated, let them choose who their leader would be. Without influence or interference from me or the city council. And it's probably the fairest way so we don't get into, you think it should be Jeannie, I think it should be Brian, somebody else might think it's somebody else. Just let them choose their own.
Well, I think it's a city council decision. You are a member of the city council. You are one of seven. That's why I made the motion to have Jeannie Lauer chair it, and that motion's on, how is that motion out of order?
As mayor, I decide that part.
Which parts that?
Part of whether your motion's in order or not. I am the presider of the city council. Let's not forget that. So what we're going to do is we're going to open up the discussion so other members of the city council can weigh in on this issue. So is there anybody else on the city council that have opinions that wish to weigh in on it? Councilman Culpepper.
Yes, Your Honor. I've been through this charter, and I agree that there are things in there that should have been addressed when we had the last charter review. Unfortunately, we all reviewed it, we all voted for it, so the blame goes all the way around the table. My concern is that when we have people appointed to this charter commission, and we have all had a hand in submitting names, and I'm assuming we all submitted names of people that we trust will do a good job. And I think at this point, what we should do is let the charter commission declare who they would like to have as their leader and their co-chair, and let them work together. We don't need to micromanage them. We have the ability to go and have, make suggestions, et cetera. But there's a reason that the charter says no one who is an elected official can sit on that commission. And I think that it's really important that we let the commission do their job.
Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. I guess to that point relative to allowing the commission to make its own decision, I feel comfortable with that. I think there's good points to be made for any candidate or any person on there to be the lead. I feel that given the challenge of a timeline, that group will come together, figure it out, and hit our timelines. I do agree with Councilman Carter, there is perceptions, and people can interpret the same passage different ways in the charter, and with that, there is a bit of a challenge to this commission. And I do think that during the public hearing portion of it, that any member of our city, including elected officials, can communicate what they believe needs to happen to the charter commission. Ultimately, it's their decision, so.
Well, matter of fact, go ahead, Councilman Levinson.
I was just going to ask in reference to Councilman Carter's motion, he's made a motion to make an adjustment in who the Chair of that commission would be. If you've ruled that out of order, there is still whether or not, what's before us tonight is an up or down on the commission itself, correct? So we could essentially vote down these appointments as a whole because apparently it sounds like we can't do it individually. Is that my understanding?
Well, no. We're not debating the people's names who've been submitted. It's the section in there where I had named a Chair and a Vice Chair.
Right. But couldn't we also?
There could be a motion to remove that recommendation totally, and we just vote the charter commission in, and then let them make the decision on who their leadership.
Right. But couldn't we also just vote down this commission if you ruled that motion out of order? We could just vote to not accept these names altogether, and that can't be ruled out of order, I would assume, that particular motion.
Well, if you do that, then you're delaying the process, and then you only got six months to go.
If these issues are important enough, it's worth delaying the process. If it's something, if there's some major issues in how this has been developed, as Councilman Carter has suggested, then it's worth delaying the process just to simply get it right. I'd rather get it right and figure it out later rather than, you know, have the right people in there correct it for the first time.
I don't think it's a key of names because when we put this process in order, we had each council member submit a name, and I submitted a name from each one of the council districts to get it to the minimum number of nine people.
Right.
And I don't think it ever has a problem with the people that's going to serve on the commission. The question is, is do we decide who's going to be the Chair, Co-Chair, or however you want to phrase it? Or do we wait, once we seat the commission, and we want to do that as quickly as we can, let them choose their leadership?
So is that a commitment from you to let that happen if we decide to move forward that way?
Right.
Okay.
Without us trying to influence who they will choose as a Chair or Vice Chair. So when we have the organizational meeting, is you need to decide, tell them kind of what the timelines are, tell them what kind of the rules are in trying to get it done, and allow them to choose who they want to lead them.
So these other issues that Councilman Carter mentioned that are kind of standards of practice around here, are those subject to change and based on what? Things like the mayor developing the agenda and who puts the charter commission together? Why is that done the way it is and why can't we change it?
Anything that's in the charter is subject to review.
Right.
That's what this is. Subject to review, and if the charter commission feel that they need to tweak it, change it, delete it, whatever, that's their decision without influence from us.
So what if the charter is silent on an issue? Things like the mayor creating the agenda? How does that get decided, how best practices?
They need to review it and make a decision if they want to. Now, they don't have to, they don't have to act on every section of the, of the charter.
Right. I think what Councilman Carter's saying is though, that's not in the charter. So it's not something for them to review, it's just something we do. So how do we change that if we wanted to?
You can add, you can take away, am I right? Yeah. You can change the charter to make it reflect as long as it does not conflict with state or the US Constitution, right?
Right. But I'm talking about existing practice. Next council meeting, we want to decide, the city council develops the agenda, not the mayor. How do we do that?
I'm going to defer to our city attorney.
I'll have to pull up the code, but I, there's no rule of procedure for this council, as far as I know. And you haven't adopted Robert's Rules. So it's mostly been by precedent.
Right.
Okay.
May I speak?
Yes.
Okay. My issue with this has not been the way the agenda is developed. It's when you have said things like, you control the agenda and we are not allowed to add items. I don't believe that's anywhere in the charter.
That has been the practice. That's the precedent.
And that's not in the charter.
Doesn't have to be in the charter for precedent.
I think it does.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I will suggest that if this is an issue, then this is something that needs to be brought to the attention of the new charter commission and have them look at that and decide if they want to incorporate that into the upcoming charter changes.
Sure. Those are the things that they need to be looking at and deciding. Like I say, this is a six-month process right now to be able to get it on the April ballot. Depends on how much in the weeds they want to get to be able to meet that timeframe. And again, these are people that we've asked to do this, that's volunteering their time. And, you know, and certainly we don't want to burn them out, having them meet every week because I think you'd end up losing them because I don't think that's a commitment that they've signed up for.
And, Your Honor, if I may, my understanding is that if there is an issue that we feel needs to be addressed by the charter commission, then we can say, we would like you to look at this. We can't tell them how to finalize it, but we can ask them to review any issue, whether it's currently in the charter or something we think should be in the charter. So we're not limiting them to what's currently there.
You know, case in point, last charter review, my big issue was, is I wanted the mayor to be able to vote on every issue rather than only vote in time. I made that known. They came up with the language, they came up with, the mayor automatically becomes a part of the city council, dot, 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 dot. I didn't tell them how to do that. That's beyond the purview of what my responsibilities are. And so they took that into consideration and they worked it out. And that's what you ended up with on the mayor being able to vote on every issue, so. Anybody else?
Yes, Your Honor. I guess to the point of Councilman Levinson, there was a, you know, there is something in the current charter that where two members can call, two members of the city council, if they feel strongly about an issue, they can call for a special meeting. And I think that was always said that, hey, even if you can't get something on the agenda, you can call a special meeting of the city council to have a discussion. And if two people wanted to get together and talk about our procedures and our role for generating the agenda, or Robert's Rules of Order, or something like that, that can still be done. So I go back to Joe Flynn, the original Chair of this. I think that's why he said, hey, we don't have to worry about the agenda. If you give the power of two council members to be able to call a special meeting, then they've got their own agenda.
I think to correct that, though, I think the mayor then decides the agenda for that special council meeting. And so it's a circular thing that we end up stuck in if we go that direction.
I've never seen anything that states that the mayor sets the agenda for a special meeting.
Well, I've never seen that states, doesn't have regular meetings either, so.
Exactly.
And therefore, that's one of the things that we think we need to put forth.
I don't know what the mayor's did before me. There's never been anything that you all didn't want since I've been mayor that we didn't deal with. Not if you can say that I denied you from doing anything or bringing anything up on an agenda. Now, future mayors, I don't know. So you might want to address this and get it more in black and white than shades of gray.
Well, if I can say this, this is not directed at you personally, this is directed at the role of the mayor.
Right, I know.
And things that came out of the 2014 charter review that recently came to light that we've all talked about, that I've clued everybody in on, that I think take away checks and balances from the charter. And that's not good governance, in my opinion.
And I don't think you'd get anybody to argue that with you. And, you know, and again, in our discussion, I basically pointed out that those issues that's important to you, go present it to the charter commission.
I will.
And, you know, and the key to it is, whatever they decide to bring back, we have to review.
Correct.
And that's why I want it done by December, so we'll have an opportunity to do that, to be able to get it on the ballot the third week of January. But guess who makes the ultimate decision?
I get that, and in my.
It's the voters.
Well, that's true, the voters, but.
The voters will make the ultimate decision on whether they accept it or not.
In my remarks, I agreed with Councilman Culpepper. I think there's plenty of blame to go around this table on what happened in 2014. I don't want to see it happen again, and I can only speak for myself, I'll be much more vigilant this time.
As you should.
Right.
Okay, now let's get back to where we are as far as.
Can I jump in here real quick? As one of the councilmen that I know for sure has actually called for a special agenda meeting, and it was made clear way back when, right after I got elected, that that agenda was controlled by the office of the mayor. Now, again, I'm not sure whether that was a precedent that was set prior to our current mayor's position or not, but it seemed like it was fairly clear that, you know, if you wanted something on the agenda, it had to go through the mayor's office unless you could get two council members together and call for a special meeting, which tends to put it in an adversarial position anyway when you do that. And I'd like to see to where we'd be a little bit more open about the agenda. I think that's a fine point, that we need to try to get in there, that we have the ability to try to set some of those agenda items to discuss. We've done some things, I think, in the last couple of years where we've discussed some things where we kind of worked it in, or at least I felt I've worked some things in on occasion where it wasn't on the agenda, but we kind of hit close enough that we could bring it up and talk about it, and it'd be nice to have it on the agenda to where people would know. Recycling is part of it. I think we brought up recycling, and I believe at that time I got shot down by the acting attorney because he said it wasn't in the agenda and therefore we couldn't do anything with it. And I had made, similar to what Councilman Carter had done, had made a motion to try to get something resolved, to try to get something to save a recycling center, and was pretty much said, no, you can't do that because that's not in the agenda. So it'd be nice to have that to where we could be able to do that. So yeah, that would be one of my prime things when we look at the, and I know where you're going with it, speak up and do it wisely.
Well, no, no, that's not where I'm going. Where I'm going is, is the reason he rejected your motion, the agenda had been printed.
Correct.
And if you had an issue, you get it on the agenda. You can't just bring it up because it hadn't been published, because our agendas are published. And you just couldn't just bring it up that night without it being on agenda, and I think that's why he ruled you out of order.
Well, I did it out of the order, and the reason I brought it up that night was because I was having difficulty to try to get that on the agenda.
Yeah.
The message I received was that it, that wasn't something that would need to be discussed. So here again, I think there needs ability to where if you feel strongly enough something in a position as a councilman, you have the ability to try to put it on the agenda without having to call for a special council meeting. So I think that's part of our responsibility in answer to the public and our constituents, if they think it's strong enough, we should feel strong enough and bring it forward. And that was just my example I could bring up on that part of it. I will be, the two people I put on there, I will be discussing it with them to try to let them know. I, you know, I picked one, I know Chris and I talked about the second one, so the two from our district we both agree on. I know some of the other people on the charter commission, I don't know them well, so when somebody makes a statement that we should be able to put faith in all those people on there, I can put faith in the two that I have, but the others I don't know very well. So I can all, I can hope, I can hope.
Only thing I would caution you on, you present it, but you do not put undue influence on people you selected or anybody on there.
Yeah.
As an elected official, because I think you're treading on thin ice if you do that.
And you won't find me doing that, and I think you know me well enough after all these years and the confrontations we've had off and on, that's not the way I work.
Well, I know that.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Chris?
Can I just ask, so what action is allowable on this issue tonight? I think we've been told this particular motion's out of order. I saw the city attorney shaking her head when I was suggesting voting down this commission. Can we not even do that? Is it simply just an item to notify the public of, these are the names on the commission?
Well, what you would do is approve the names of the people on the commission so we can get them organized and get them to start at working.
Could we not?
Because again, we've just added a lot of stuff that we want them to look at.
Right.
You've got six months, and they will be working every week, and I don't think they signed up to do that. They're doing this for free.
So what I'm hearing is the action is an up or down vote on these names for the charter review commission?
But don't we want to eliminate the assignment of the?
Chair and Vice.
Chair and Vice Chair. And how do we go about then?
Well, the reason I said yes was not in order is because we had not had a chance to discuss it. So now we have a discussion. So if anybody, if we're done discussing it, if anybody want to make a motion to whatever you want to do, my suggestion is you take it, you go ahead and approve the members, and you let them decide who their leaders are.
If I may?
Yes.
I don't want to do anything that's going to slow this process down, so I would make a motion that we approve the members without designation of Chair or Vice Chair.
And I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Have we discussed it and cussed it enough?
Everybody's discussed it, but the newbie down here.
We will recognize the newbie down there.
I wasn't on this council when all this went down, but I do have a question about the Chair and Co-Chair because, and help me understand a little bit, but in some commissions, you can have Chair that's more than one term, and some you can't. Is that correct? Or is it all, you're not supposed to? Or is it all, well, we're going to pick this one, or we're not going to pick this one? I don't understand the lingo here of exactly how we pick when some of them can be more than one term and some of them can't be. Am I misunderstanding something here?
No, I think there's inconsistency, and I'll let our city clerk talk about it because we're trying to go through and make most of those consistent. If you take a look on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board and the Human Relations Commission, on that one by ordinance, the mayor names the Chair and the Vice Chair. On other commissions, they select it among themselves. So there's some inconsistencies.
Yes, some of it is written in the ordinances that control.
Right, there's in ordinance for those two. It's written in the ordinance.
Okay. And then, so we come back around, because it really is not clear in the charter exactly how we named the Chair or Co-Chair. It's just been how we've been, correct me, the way we've been doing it in the past, is that correct?
The Chair and Vice Chair on Planning Commission, Park Commission, and all that, there is no rule, it's not in the ordinance where the mayor names the Chair or Vice Chair. So what has happened in the past, the practice has been, is they select a person among themselves. And basically, it's almost kind of like being a mayor pro temp. You kind of rotate it around. I'm not sure that's really a good thing because sometimes, just because a person's been on a board or commission for a long time, does that mean that they're capable of running the meetings like they should be? And we've had some evidence of that in the past.
Understand that.
So, anyway, did that kind of answer your question?
Yeah. But it kind of come back around the barn a little bit, it's kind of like what this is. To me, I'm not seeing it clear whether they, it can be or it can't be, and that's, I just think that that's something they need to look into also.
Yeah, we're taking a look at it. I know Cheryl is taking a look at it with Jackie and trying to see how can we get more of those things consistent. Okay, any further discussion? There's a motion on the table that we appoint the members that's been designated and that they will choose their leaders themselves. And I repeat, without us trying to influence it. That doesn't have to be part of the motion, but they need to make their decision, so.
Call that for a second.
Yeah. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. We got through that part. Now, we have a presentation about a solid waste management commission.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. As you know, my name is Bob Faisal, and I'm the Vice Chairman of this commission. And members of the city council, thank you very much as well. Many of you have been influential as to the process. Ron Fowler was our previous, what were you, liaison?
Liaison.
Liaison to the commission, and now Dale Carter's going to be taking up that seat. And Jackie here has also been very helpful in the past by keeping us in order so that we don't make mistakes. So thank you very much for your support. I also want to take time to thank the 15 residents and the several businesses that took process, took time out of their days to come to the meetings and give their voices. And those people were very influential as well. And they gave us a lot of data, and we went through a lot of data. After several meetings, both jointly with public and without, we came up with 14 recommendations. As you see before you, we don't have 14 recommendations to give you, we only have five. So nine have been tabled for this point in time, and we will get back to those later in a future date. I also want to thank the members of the committee who were working diligently with me, and if you could bring up that slide, that'd be appreciated. James Berry, myself, Ann Lane Gibson, Eli Nolan, John Nolan, Byron Kradoff, who's sitting in the room with us as well, and Dale Carter, who's going to be our new council liaison. So we'll get down to the recommendations. Number one is rather controversial in this city, is whether or not the trash can should be five feet from the curb. Our recommendation is that should be removed, simply because in the. Our recommendation is that should be removed, simply because in the, it increases safety in the fidgets, as you see, and it's potentially hauling cost, it causes the haulers a lot of distress. And they've voiced their opinions, they don't like it. So we have several members of the hauling community who do not come to Blue Springs for that reason, because of that particular ordinance. So it's keeping people outside Blue Springs who could actually be hauling for us. That's one of the things that we want to change. Number two, we considered a requirement that the haulers provide an audit to the city. Now, that's an interesting conversation by itself. As you know, this commission operates on diversion rates. We need to know data and how things come in and come out as far as recycling and all the data that goes along with that. It helps us determine our solutions to what we want to do, how things are moving, what products are moving, things like that. But we also know that's a sensitive issue to trash haulers, because that is proprietary information within their business, so that has to be dealt with carefully. Recommendations for a new RFP, and send directly to the, directly being the prime word there, to the trash haulers, license to determine updated costs for recycling centers. Now, directly, I'm talking about what, the way we currently do it, we put out the notice in the paper, and they're supposed to find it, and they come out and make a bid, right? That's how we do it currently. But we're asking that to be changed. We're asking to go directly to the haulers so that each and every hauler that we're considering has the opportunity to bid in Blue Springs. So that changes the game a little bit more, gives us more opportunity to bring in new haulers and a little more competition into the industry. Send directly to licensed haulers, will assure that haulers are aware of the opportunity to bid is the important issue that went along with that. Number four, designate funds in the annual city budget to reopen and operate the recycling center with the possibility of funding a future tax. Now, our numbers are sketchy at best, it'll take some time to get some real numbers, but we're looking at maybe five, six bucks per person in this city per year, or per household per year. So those numbers aren't solid by any means, but it's basically one small amount of money that this city could put forth to run that recycling center. We'd like to have that designated as a line item in the budget, and then potentially fund that center through maybe, like we said, voter tax or some other option, but we're looking at that. And number five, consider working towards a plan to divide the city into three to four districts or zones, and contract trash and recycle, recycling services for each. Now, this is a concept that Mark was actually pretty thrilled with. They liked the idea. And I heard from several of the trash haulers, and they kind of liked it too, because it consolidates their territories, keeps the trash companies from running all over each other's territories. It also reduces impact to infrastructure, and then all the homes in the neighborhoods have the same trash day. That's just a concept that if you, if you really look into this, you'll find out, there's a lot of merit that goes along with this idea. So that's, that's being pushed by Mark, they like it. So that's, that's our last recommendation that we have at this time. We'll open it up to questions if you'd like.
Bob, on number five, this is a concept that I've supported for a long time. How many years ago was it? Do you probably still have trash?
Scars.
Tire scars on you?
That would have been back in Renew the Blue days.
It was about, no, it was about seven years ago we did that commission.
About seven years ago, and it made sense. The problem we had back then, one of your larger trash haulers in the area was local, and there was a lot of opposition mounted toward that.
Yeah, I remember.
You remember, so now?
I remember.
Now you basically got the big boys, and they probably don't mind it as much. And I think that's a serious one that we certainly need to take a look at, because it is, it's less wear and tear on our streets, that we have to come up every year and try to do rehabilitation too. So I think that one has, has a lot of merit. And it's not something that's going to happen overnight, but I think it's something we probably need. Now, the key to it is, if I remember correctly, due to state statute, there is a two-year notification before you can actually start doing it.
That's correct.
Yeah, so you'd have to take a look at those, but I certainly like that concept.
Well, I'm glad you do.
Yeah.
Because I think that that's probably going to be a big one, of all the things that we've recommended so far. But as I said, we have 14 other recommendations that we're going over, but that we're not bringing to you tonight.
Anybody else? Councilman Carter?
Bob, you mentioned the recycling center. When we closed the recycling center, kind of what I was hearing was, there was a glut on the market, and so the material that was being sent to the recycling centers, you know, the companies we're sending it to, they're not getting the kind of money for it, because really a victim of its own success, that everybody's recycling now, so the commodity prices have gone down. Is that still the case?
Well, that's about to change, as all prices do, Dale. It's not something that stays solid. Give it some time and, you know, let things work themselves out, but plastics are going to be around forever. And if we look at single-use plastics, single-use plastics are the real cause of the problem, because we pick up one piece and we, we can't recycle it, we throw it down on the ground and it blows into the street, and, you know, it just never comes back, and you can't do anything with it. It goes into the landfill, it stays there. Recyclables, there, you can take them out and make new stuff, and, you know, remake the bottle and keep using the bottle and things like that. So if we keep making new plastics, why, that just adds to the stream. So quantity is going to increase, and you're not going to be able to do anything with it. Recycling really is the only answer.
Well, the other question I have on that is, don't the local haulers offer recycling?
Yes.
Is that not a simpler solution than having a?
We have looked into that as well. We're not making that recommendation at this time, but that certainly is one of the things that we're looking at.
Councilman Carter, let me add a little bit on to that. I know I had sent a copy to the city council, Lisa McDaniel with Mid-America Regional Council, made a program on the board of directors, I mean, of the Mid-America Regional Council, and she had a very compelling presentation that I shared with the city council, I guess y'all saw that. And I also asked staff to share that with your solid waste commission. One of the problems you have, and the reason commodity prices have really dropped, you don't have the market, because China was the biggest purchaser of recycled products.
That is correct.
And as they started demand, and not just from the United States, from all other countries, they began to become more particular about how?
How they would receive it.
They would receive those.
That's correct.
To the point to where it wasn't cost-effective to even try to provide it anymore. And one of the compelling things to me is things, a lot of things that you think you're recycling are ending up in landfills. And to me, that's a problem, you don't pay somebody, you might as well just put it out with your trash, if it's going to end up in a landfill anyway.
Amen.
So anyway, those are just, it's a very complex issue in trying to sort that out as we talk about recycling. As a kid growing up, we were recycling, and I didn't know it. We were having my shoes sold and healed until you just couldn't wear them anymore.
The milk bottle.
Buying your jeans three sizes too big and grow into it. So we were preserving and doing things that I didn't realize, man, if I'd just known I was recycling back then or doing some of these things. But I appreciate the work that you're all doing and trying to come up with reasonable I encourage you to continue to stay focused on it, because one of the problems we encountered when we had to shut ours down here, none of the surrounding cities were doing it anymore. So you're attracting people from all over the place that the residents of Blue Springs are subsidizing, when we were having to go from $10,000 a year to $100,000 a year, to the haulers were hauling the stuff away.
We have talked about those issues, and order to not take up your entire evening, we've left those issues off the ballot tonight, so.
Mr. Mayor? Anybody else?
I wanted to ask, on that same topic, on the recycling center, when it was shut down in the last budget, I think Councilman Edmondson and myself had talked a lot about having the recycling center charge a fee, and just as the mayor said, there's people from all over the region that were still interested in bringing stuff through the recycling center, said they would pay that fee. I'm of the opinion that that would probably be self-sustaining, that I'm in the minority opinion on that, but did you do any research to see what kind of revenue we could generate by charging a fee at the recycling center itself?
How can you figure out how many people are going to come from other cities? Number one, how can you figure that out? We had an organization called Green Blue Springs who tried to help us with that, and we came up with some, some data, but it was minute compared to, you know, the entire aspect. But it does show promise, it does show promise. I'm not saying it's the right answer or the wrong answer at this time, but it does show promise.
But you at least did some research along those lines.
The question is, what would you charge somebody? 50 cents a buck, you know, each time they came in to throw their stuff away, you know? But if you're a resident of Blue Springs, then, you know, somehow you have to fund it to where it's in, it's already been paid, and you just go in and go out without the headache of trying to pay as you go through the door every time. So we're looking at convenience as far as functionality, and then you've got to pay for it as well, so.
Okay, I was just interested in seeing if you looked at that, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, may I? As Councilman Levise stated, we did try to, try to save the recycling center at one time, and part of the proposal was to combat the fact that you had people from outside Blue Springs coming in, was to associate a fee with that and have a higher fee for those that were not a resident, you know, have to provide some sort of proof of residency through a utility bill or whatever. And based on that, at that time, we were looking at just funding it a year so that you could gather that data, and then leave that up to the solid waste commission to try to come up with a structure maybe of how to, how to up or down on fees or go that way. The one thing I would say, just to throw out there, the recycling center here in Blue Springs, down at the American Legion building, seems to be doing very well. He seems to be having, be full in less than seven days. I mean, usually it's a weekend, and by Monday or Monday or Tuesday at the latest, he's got to sign up saying that he's full. Last time I talked to him, which was probably about a month ago, we were discussing the price of steel and copper and that type of thing, how it had dropped, but he's still making money off of his recycling center on a private venture. So though things have gone down, there's still some money to be made in it. So I, you know, to me, I hate to see throw recycling away, but I also hate to see the residents of Blue Springs subsidizing something for Green Valley, Independence, Lee Summit, Jackson County. If we do come up with something, it needs to be something that, that they carry or at least pay for their part of the share of what they're doing.
Well, I agree with you, I do agree with you.
Is that it?
Well, I was just going to say, and I don't want to burst anybody's bubble, but I'm not driving across town for recycling when I can pay a dollar to a dollar fifty a month and have it picked up at my door every week, along with all my trash and all along with my yard waste. You know, I'm hard-pressed to do that. My, my other comment I wanted to make was this idea of putting all the trash containers out at the curb. I can't tell you how many complaints I get about trash containers out at the curb, even though they're not supposed to be, and people do it, and then they're tipped over and there's trash around. It's just, it, it does create, and I know you say, well, it creates, it's safer to have them out by the curb, where I'm not so sure that that's accurate, because now you're, you've got trash containers lining your streets, and I find that to be more of a safety issue than having the trash people come up, and that's what we pay them to do.
Well, I understand that.
Is to go up and pick them up. And I'm not, I'm not in the business of making someone else's living, I am in the business of keeping our community safe and clean, and so I think that we need to revisit that, that would just be my opinion.
Okay, just keep in mind that automation is the way of the future. Trucks pretty soon will be picking up those little blue containers by robotic arm, and there will not be a man on the truck. So just keep in mind that this is coming, and there's not much you're going to be able to do about it. You can set that rule if you want, and you can stay with it, but the trash companies are going to be moving in that direction, and you won't be able to stand. They're going to tell you that they, they simply will not do it.
Certainly, and my, one of my daughters live in California, and they do have the arm. Matter of fact, my yard waste a day, I didn't have it at the curb. I take man out just a little bit, so he jumped out and took it to the arm that picked up the cart and dumped it.
Right.
And so, and every time I happen to be out, he's saying, "It would be nice if these carts were there." And I think you're right, because I know a lot of cities, and I have another daughter that lives in Atlanta, and that's how their trash is picked up.
Currently being done in Kansas City as we speak?
Yeah. So I think that is kind of a wave of the future that we're going to see, and at that time, we might have to address.
Well, yeah, and I, I think it would be a little different if we had one trash hauler in an area, where, but right, the way we are right now, that means every day of the week you're going to have trash cans up and down the street.
Well, and that, that's an issue by itself.
Yeah.
So again, by removing that, you, you get to revisit the whole process. But as it is now, it, it's not workable. That's, that's causing a problem with people, if you drive through your city, you'll find out that people are ignoring it, and half of the time, the trash cans are down by the end of the street anyway.
That's why it'd be a lot simpler once we get this number five recommendation in, then you can make that part of it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why I think number five is key to the whole issue.
Yes. Okay, anybody else? If not, thank you, Bob, for bringing that presentation to us, and all members of the Solid Waste Commission, stand up, that's here to support this, and we thank you for being here to see. We appreciate your service.
Thank you, council, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that brings us to mayoral announcements. If you live in Blue Springs, you should have gotten this mailer in the mail. We do this every year as we approach the Fourth of July, and the purpose of it is to remind you to be a good neighbor and celebrate smart this Independence Day. Be legal, and we have the times on there that you can actually shoot off fireworks. Think safe, play smart, and clean up behind your mess. I mean, you shoot firecrackers, so many people, they have fun, and they forget to bring the broom and the dustpan out and clean that stuff up. And also, some of the fireworks they shoot off, and my neighborhood's getting old, so we don't shoot fireworks unless we got grandkids or somebody over. I found stuff in my yard where they shoot stuff up and it lands in my yard. So I've been the neighbor that I am, I just go clean it up and don't complain. So the other thing is, and we do this so you don't have to shoot your own fireworks off unless you just want to, we have a Fourth of July celebration at PV Stadium, and that's at the Blue Springs High School. The theme again is red, white, and blue springs. And then we will have a rainbow of colors to fill the skies that evening. There's going to be live entertainment. Michael Dale featuring Monica Pierce. The gates will open at 6:30, live entertainment starts at 7:30, and the fireworks will probably go off about a quarter to 10 after it gets dark. St. Mary's Medical Center and 94.1 KFKF are the sponsors this year to have the freight calls from the city. I thoroughly enjoy it, because some of the surrounding cities start shooting theirs off prior to us shooting ours, and then I kind of get a big kick out of watching them, and then you watch us for the grand finale. I get excited about stuff when we do it well. Okay, this brings us to thoughts to ponder, and I'm not going to even try to pronounce this person's name, I'm going to just spell it. V A U V E N A R G U E S. Now, if any of you can pronounce what that is.
Is that a first name or a last name?
It doesn't say.
Middle name.
Yes.
Middle name.
But the quote is, patience is the art of hoping, end quote. That brings us to visitors appearance forms. I have one form here from, I got two forms. Got Marcia Warner about recycling. Is Marcia Warner?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yeah, since we've had this discussion, we're going to ask you to be brief on that.
Yes, sir.
Because we still have some more business we got to do.
I appreciate that. Thank you for the time to speak to the council and yourself. And I am here as a member of the Green Blue Springs group that formed after last year's city council meeting. We formed to work closely with the solid waste commission, which you already heard. We want to thank the solid waste commission for all their work and for listening to our concerns and involving us in the process. Our group is supporting any plan that improves recycling outcomes, and we support all the recommendations the solid waste commission has provided. We want to emphasize one, the one about the requirement that the haulers report waste to recycling metrics to the city. You already know that that was approved by the commission. You already know that that was approved by the commission and haulers have informed us that they already do this in neighboring cities like Lee Summit, and it would be relatively easy for them to do it here as well. We believe that that would help improve the trust between the haulers and the customers since customers will know that their recycling is not ending up in a landfill. Also, customers would be able to see what their haulers, which haulers are doing the best at recycling and hire those if we haven't gone to that proposal number five. And most importantly, it allows the city to track deferment rates over time and that will allow us to evaluate future recycling initiatives and meet long-term recycling goals. Our primary concern is the lack of a specific plan for allocating money to reopening the center and meeting the long-term recycling goals. So we did do a survey the last two weeks that the recycling center was open and I gave you the handout and it looks like this, if you could take a quick look at it. Over the two weeks that we surveyed, we surveyed 970 unique individuals and asked them questions about what they would do with their recycling. When we asked them questions, we asked which were residents and which were not. 68% were Blue Springs residents, 32% were non-Blue Springs residents. And if you look at the infographic in the middle, it shows you what their answers were. So you can see the big red trash can in the middle, 30% said they would throw their trash or dump in the landfill. And Councilwoman Culpepper, the main reason for this is a lot of those people do not have street-side trash hauling. They are people that live in apartments that do not have recycling services. So 30% would equal a large number down there, as you can see, and that would be at least 282 hundred thousand pounds going to our trash landfills instead of recycling. I think that's a serious concern and I'm hoping that you will consider that. The 30% of those surveyed planned to dump it in the trash. For this reason, it's our position that deferring to private haulers without any new rules or regulations is an unacceptable solution. Allowing the difficulty of including, we acknowledge the difficulty of opening, reopening the center in the current budget, especially with the recent increase in costs. But both our group and the commission have had additional ideas for improving recycling outcomes that could end up costing much less. Our final concern and our final request is that the council, should you deem the recommendation to financially open that recycling center infeasible, that you would allow the commission and the Green Blue Springs to continue working on additional solutions rather than dropping them out completely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We do have another visitor's form. Cassie Guneer. Cassie, want to talk about asbestos, mold, and radon?
I don't know. Thank you very much. I always loved that we have a council. I actually would have had a presentation for you. I've been dealing with so many different departments that the governor actually sent me to...
Can you pull that microphone down a little bit so I can get a little bit closer so we can hear you? Okay.
Is that better?
It's better.
Yeah? Okay. So unfortunately, there is a management company that, this is going to actually be changing laws and more likely, you've seen it in media. I have been working with the EPA, Department of Natural Resources, which I actually have a letter from them, starting working with the Missouri's Department of Health and Senior Services. There is a management company that used up the state of Missouri, but they have a license here. That is valid. They went and set up in Kansas. That license is delinquent. Actually, the city of Blue Springs hates this management company with a passion, trust me, I know. They should have never leased me the property that they did. They took advantage of the fact that I was in the Safe at Home program and the utilities came with it. Finding out from all the prior tenants that they're, it basically was in the condemned state when I moved in. I was in the hospital within three months with chronic diseases I've never had before. If I'm going to make it now, I don't know. But the issue is, they also flooded the property in 2016. Their only thing is to cover their tracks, basically. And the prior tenants had pointed out that there was an inch and a half thick, 20 feet by 12 feet of mold. I saw this mold. And they snuck in and scraped it off of what I have found to be asbestos, radon, lead, everything else. It is a five-unit dwelling, so the, which department is this?
Let me ask you this question. You said you've contacted EPA and DNR.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what are they doing about it? Because it sounds like this is beyond the purview of what the city can do, that those are the agencies that you should be working with.
I, well, yeah, I am working with them.
To adjudicate that problem.
Actually, they made a letter for me to bring here. The governor, the EPA, and the DNR said the first step is going to start with the city. They told me to come to the city council meeting. The problem is, there's two of, one is the second deadliest mold that there is, and one of them is very deadly as well. But when it dries, it turns into a dust. This dust is going throughout the neighborhood. The neighbor on the corner has had two strokes since they snuck in and scraped and made these airborne. Nobody knew at the time what was going on. Everybody was getting sick, people put pets down. We found out that they were winning and scraped. Of course, I'm not going to say wee-wee because if a lot of the neighbors knew, it'd be an uproar. That's kind of why I'm addressing the city as well.
Let me ask another question to staff. I don't know, city attorney to, we don't have a health department in Blue Springs.
Right. I know this.
So...
Been trying for two years to get coenforcement out there. I'm fully aware.
Yeah.
Only external, and the city did write up for external.
Because I'm still here, I'm struggling, trying to figure out what is our role, that EPA and DNR, who are the ones that should be...
And the governor.
Investigate, the governor, the former governor?
No.
The new governor?
Yep.
He's already passing the buck?
Yep. Yeah.
Well, just trying to figure out what role can we play in dealing with this and maybe staff has some idea. I don't know.
What they told me is, and actually, it's been a unison of all of them, Kevin is the one at the governor's office that I spoke with and I'm supposed to get back with him afterwards. But the first step is, and the EPA and the Department of Natural Resources are both, and there's a third one, Missouri's Department of Health and Senior Services, they're all going to investigate the property. It is a five-unit dwelling. The issue being that this company sneaks in and does what they want. Like when we did the air quality sample, there were mushrooms growing on the corner. When they came out after the air sample test was done, that mushrooms were gone.
What can we do? I'm trying to get to the bottom of it.
Oh, okay.
What are you asking of us?
The city is supposed to, basically because there is no entity to condemn the property, is to condemn, secure that premises so that the management company isn't sneaking in and doing, it's highly illegal what they've done. And to prevent more people from getting sick, there's a lot of kids in that neighborhood. There's two brand-new babies across the street. And these government agencies set it up to the city because there is no, trust me, I tried for two years. I've been everywhere, speaking to everyone, and Missouri is exhausted.
Okay, let me, Mike, is that anything that your department with codes? Is Tom over there?
Yes.
There you are.
For the most part, codes is somewhat limited to exterior of the facility. I would happen, I would be happy to be in receipt or possession of the letter that she has to present and I could kind of chase down through a number of other circles what we may or may not be able to do. But off the cuff, it certainly sounds like it should start with the Jackson County Health Department rather than the city of Blue Springs at this point.
They sent me here too.
Okay. Well, Tom's going to take a look at it and see, you know, what we can do, if anything. And then you would have satisfied their requirements, you started with the city. And you might, is your contact information on there for Tom?
Yes.
Here, we got it right here. You fill this out so we've got it. Okay, well, let's see what happens, Cassie.
Okay, because the thing, when it's dry like it is and as windy as it is, that dust has been blowing literally, there's 40 houses.
Okay.
The way the neighborhood is built. This dust is blowing directly to...
We'll look into it and see if there's anything that we can do.
Okay.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We do have another special guest that I guess is outside that is making the rounds. He's been to a number of city council meetings. He's received a number of proclamations from cities. He already has a proclamation from the city of Blue Springs. And I would like to introduce you to Stanley. Stanley, come on down, Stanley. Welcome, Stanley. Stanley is here because of bullying. Did I get that right? He's fighting against bullying, which is very important because I think we all understand that it exists. And so Stanley is making the rounds to help stamp out bullying. And I know a number of mayors have told me that he's made his presence at their facility and we're just happy to have him here. Stanley, don't you turn your back on me. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Stanley, I didn't mean to frighten you. But yes, would you like to do whatever Stanley does when you make a visit?
You need a phone number.
Mayor, on behalf of Stanley and our family, we wanted to say thank you for giving your proclamation.
Oh, all right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you taking the time to come and bring Stanley to visit. And you have the proclamation there?
Yes.
That we did for him, so I'm sure you're probably filling his walls with proclamations now.
Yes, we are. Our goal is to get up there.
I knew that, yeah, I'd read that. And what number are you up to now?
We're at 35.
35. See, I got a little doing that. Well, I know Mayor David Slater from Pleasant Valley, he's really pushing it to all the mayors and said, if you haven't had Stanley, make sure Stanley comes and you do a proclamation. And I told him that Stanley was coming here on the 18th and we're just so happy you made the trip.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here.
Stanley's hometown is?
Stanley's getting his picture. The mayor's going to be...
Edgerton, okay. It's a big dog. What's his hashtag? Does he have one?
I think it's Stanley the dog.
Is it?
I think so. Stand up for Stanley. I don't want to... Stand up for Stanley. Are you making it up?
I'm not. I hope they're concomitant.
I pulled that one.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Mic drop.
Thank you, Stanley. Thank you so much.
Stand up for Stanley.
Stand up for Stanley.
Stand up for Stanley.
Yeah, you don't have to worry about it.
Do you have any props?
Edgerton, Kansas, Edgerton, Missouri?
I think Missouri.
Okay, that brings us to a motion by our city attorney for someone to so moved.
Your honor, at this time, the appropriate motion would be for the public body to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610-021, sub-paragraphs 2 and 9, revised statutes of Missouri, for the purpose of privileged communications between a governmental body or its representative and legal counsel relating to real estate and negotiations with employee groups, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed and that this body stand adjourned at the completion of such session.
So moved.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Lettison?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Lettison?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kahler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We're going, you can visit, sit around, whatever, but we're going to be moving to another room for an executive session.